Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Tuesday, March 23rd. It is 6:00 PM. We have a quorum in council chambers, a full dais, including Councilmember Jackson, who's with us virtually. It is 6 o'clock, and I'm calling this meeting to order. We will be moving immediately into item number two, executive session. We will meet and discuss item 2A. City Council shall convene and disclose the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel and to deliberate upon the acquisition of real property interests associated with the construction of wastewater treatment plant number three at 385 State Highway 304, Unit B, Bastrop, Texas, 78602, and its collection systems, including all related agreements, authorizations, easements, resolutions, and associated legal actions. It is 6:00 PM, and we are in executive session. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It is 6:12. We are now out of executive session, and there will be no actions or votes taken as a result of executive session. So it is 6:12, and we are in recess. We will reconvene at 6:30 for our regular meeting. Thank you. It is 6:30, and we are back in regular session. The City Council, the City of Bastrop, Texas, reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please stand, we will say the pledge to both flags.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of this land, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the U.S. Treasury, the month of May, under God, one and indivisible.
If you would please remain standing. We're honored to have Pastor Phil Woods with us this evening from Bastrop First Assembly. Pastor Woods, he'll be seeing our invocation.
Father, we just want to thank you for such a beautiful day today. And Lord, we thank you for your provisions and your bountiful blessings that you have blessed us with. And tonight, we ask that you just direct our city council as they go before the agenda that's before them, or that you just give them wisdom on each decision that has to be made. We pray and lift up each one of our departments throughout the city tonight. And Lord, our police department, as they're there to protect us, and at times, they have to put themselves in harm's way. We just pray tonight that no harm whatsoever would befall any of them. And Lord, again, we just want to thank you for your blessings, Lord, for the privilege to live here in Bastrop and the way in which you bless our community. We give you praise tonight, for I pray it in Jesus' name. Amen.
You may be seated. Thank you, Pastor Woods. He also serves on our housing board and just gives back to the community in many, many ways. One of his peers on the housing board is also here with us tonight, Pastor Jackson, and we'll be talking to her in a little bit. All right, council, we're moving on to item 7A, which is the mayor's report. Before I get started, I -- council, it is Jennifer Bill's birthday today, and the beauty of Jennifer's birthday is Jennifer is not here. So the city manager let her have the evening off, and we wish her the very best and hope that she's having a good time celebrating her birthday. All right, Colin, you catching up?
Yeah.
Okay, we can keep going. All right. On the left-hand side, this is totally self-motivating, self-proving, but I am looking out for my friend Rebecca Gleason. On the left-hand side of this document, you see "In Memory of Benny and Lily Schrader." That's my in-laws. And that's the shameless plug is if you, too, would like to have a plaque on one of the benches, they are available, and you can see Rebecca Gleason and the Main Street Board would be very appreciative of that. Colin, if you back off to that and show the picture beneath it. The reason that I picked that particular bench, and it's the one that if you were sitting down, you're seeing the back of the plaque. When you sit on their bench, when you look forward, you are looking at the place that they had a business on Main Street for many, many years. It's where First National Bank is now. Back when they had the business, it was uniquely named Schrader's Place. And my husband tells me that the reason it was named Schrader's Place was because the TABC license was cheaper if your name was in the title. So it was Schrader's Place. That's how that deal happened. So great benches on our Main Street, and I wanted to honor my in-laws, and my husband and I both were so proud to have the Schrader family recognized on Main Street, but also put in the shameless plug if any of you would like to honor someone, to please think about getting a bench. And in the middle, you'll see the TMLI, which is the Texas Municipal League Institute. They have, every year, they give awards if you do a certain number of hours of training. And one of the awards that you can earn, one of the certifications that you can get is to be a certified municipal official. And it means that you've taken training, you've taken Open Meetings Act, Public Information Act every year. There's some specific things that you have to do that. And this year, Councilmember Jackson, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, and myself all earned that CMO certification. There were 43 people across the state of Texas, and we were three of them. So we were happy to celebrate that last Thursday. And then on the right, you see a phenomenal picture of Sonia Coate and David Barrow and their little dog Willie. And if you haven't already enjoyed Storehouse, you need to do that. David's got a farm that's up on Main Street, and she's a magnificent chef, and so it is from the farm on Main Street to their fork at their restaurant. And that picture and that caption is in a Texas Monthly that you can buy now. So yay Bastrop for making Texas Monthly, and we are so pleased to have Sonia and David as a part of our community. Colin, if you go to the next page, you'll see that it said that I was going to testify at the Senate Committee hearing on Monday. That looks like that's going to be next Monday, but I will be testifying at the House State Affairs Committee hearing on Thursday. So I'll be at the Capitol on Thursday. I did have the BDC Board meeting on Monday, and we're here tonight. And then if you go to the upcoming events, you can see that people are starting to get that spring fever, and there's a lot of fun things going on. I do want to mention on Friday, this may not be exciting for anyone, but if you were on council, you would be extremely excited about this. We are having the groundbreaking for our wastewater treatment plant, which is a huge deal and has been needed in this community for decades. So we're super excited about that. And then that night, I will be at the Bastrop High School Varsity Girls. They made the district playoffs, and my granddaughter's going to be playing, and Nani's going to be in the stands celebrating that. Also, on April 3rd, I will be going out with the National Guard again to provide the second dose to the, as a part of our Save Our Seniors program. We are coming back for the second doses, so I'm looking forward to seeing those folks again. Got some ribbon cuttings, and we'll be back at council on April 13th. That was all I had tonight. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, what have you got?
Just real quick, Madam Mayor. Colin, if you put that one slide up that I furnished, I don't have fancy pictures, I just have a slide. On the authority this council provided back in November to the mayor, myself, and our city manager relative to advocating on legislative issues, either for or against, I had occasion to be at the Capitol and put together a short list, certainly not an all-inclusive list, of legislative items that were of concern to us, considering there's over 5,000 bills filed, and about 1,200 or a third, fourth of them have to do with municipalities. You can see I culled that list pretty heavily. I just wanted y'all to be aware that these are issues that we're trying to address with our legislative delegation, as well as with the chairman of the various committees that may sway over some of the legislation that may be of benefit or deficit to us. And if there's something that y'all see that comes down the pike relative to legislation that y'all would like for us to address, please let us know. We can do that and be happy to do that. It's going to be an uphill battle on some issues, but we're willing to take that battle on. So if y'all got any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson. With Councilmember Rogers?
Well, Mayor, I wanted to thank you for putting in the plug for the benches. The money that we raised from those plaques, we buy more benches and more trashcans and things to finish out the sidewalk. So thank you for plugging that, and we'll keep going with Main Street.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Thanks, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Ennis?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, I'd just like to follow up with what Mayor Pro Tim said about the legislative session. As the mayor knows, we were discussing some of these issues at our Texas Municipal League Board meeting recently, and it is going to be a concentrated effort to make sure that cities are represented and that we have some input into the legislation, that some of these new laws and things and bills that are good and some that are bad are addressed. And so I just wanted to say, that's something that's very important to all cities, and I hope that we'll all become involved with it. But I really wanted to have a special prayers tonight for all the mass shootings that, well, the two mass shootings that occurred this week. And it's been, I especially want to have prayers for the police officer that was killed yesterday and for the Asian-American Pacific Islanders that were also killed. It's back to a point where this has almost not really become a daily situation or weekly or monthly, but it's something that we witness all too often, and so I'm hoping that we can pray for our country, pray that we address that to the best extent that we can, and that we can make sure to stop or prevent these things from happening in the future. So please pray for those communities and for our country as we continue this mass shootings that continue to happen.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. We're moving on to item 7C, City Manager, Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to highlight some of the great public service work that is going on with one of our city employees that is beyond the day-to-day job. Counsel, I think most of you know Ben Williams. He's worked with the city of Bastrop for quite a while, specifically has worked with special events and helping out at the convention center and is a member of the Public Works Department. You may not be aware that for several years now, Ben with others here in the community, volunteers with VITA, that is an IRS-sponsored income tax preparation service that concentrates on preparing returns for low-income and disabled persons. Ben and his team process hundreds of tax returns a year. He is proud to point out that they're pretty good at finding refund opportunities for people. Again, not sure the extent to which people know about Ben and his pretty special volunteer work, but I did want to take just a moment to point out the great volunteer work of one of our city employees. Thanks, Colin. And counsel, I mentioned this in Friday's memo. We are going through, have been going through, a pretty concentrated effort to take care of something that is, sounds as mundane and as boring as taking care of the proper disposition of city documents. We did allow documents that hadn't been properly disposed of to accumulate at some of our facilities, specifically the old senior center. And counsel, you guys know we are targeting using the old senior center for recreation programs starting in July, and the building was full of stuff that we needed to get rid of. Curtis in the Public Works Department moved, I think it was eight pallets of, loaded up with document boxes. We moved them over to the convention center where Ann Franklin and Victoria Pensick coordinated an effort to make sure that documents that could be destroyed legally in accordance with our document retention policies could be otherwise were electronically filed or kept in a paper file, depending on what the status of it. But thankfully, a whole bunch of this stuff could just go away because it was beyond that storage retention period or duplicated somewhere else. And so kudos to Ann and Victoria for coordinating that and just about every other city department that had stuff in that building that we needed to get through. And we spent a day concentrating on that effort, and I appreciate that, wanted to share it. Counsel, your next council meeting is in three weeks because March is one of those months with five Tuesdays in it. And your April 13th council meeting does contain a lot of interesting stuff, and you know about some of this already. CFO Waldron, in a few minutes, will give you an update on our finances, the monthly financial report. We still are lagging behind with hotel motel tax revenues. And as we've discussed here before, and as you've requested, we have been meeting with those groups that have the benefit of spending hotel motel revenues about how we might manage the revenue shortfall. And I'm collecting information on all that, and we'll give you a report on that on April 13th and ask you to give us direction as a result of it. And speaking of our community assets, April 13th is time for their next quarterly report. And counsel, you also know that for a few months now, we have been working with a consultant on a compensation study. We have the results of that study in. As requested, one of the aspects of that study is the nature and the number of city holidays and how we compare in the market on that. And we'll be giving you all of that. We'll be asking you to give direction as appropriate as well. We are talking tonight about a pending grant application to, it's a CDBG application that goes to the Texas Department of Agriculture. We're asking you tonight to select the engineer that will help us with that project. We'll describe that a bit more later this evening. We'll be asking you to actually approve the grant application formally on April 13th. And I think I have one more slide with more stuff for April 13th. We have an application for an existing business that is actually moving their downtown location to 924 Main Street, and so they need a variance for the sale of alcoholic beverages, and we'll ask counsel to consider that and hold a necessary public hearing. We will have a public hearing to consider designating the chimney that's down at Fisherman's Park along the trail, historic item that was, that's been an agenda item before the Historic Landmark Commission. And counsel, we will receive a presentation on April 13th from the Bastrop Central Pasol District about our opportunity to create a temporary disaster exemption for those property owners that were affected by the recent ice storm. We haven't seen a whole lot of numbers on this, but just in case we're missing something, we'll be recommending that counsel consider that on April 13th and provide that tax exemption opportunity for those property owners who need that. And the mayor already mentioned the groundbreaking ceremony this Friday. I'm showing counsel the invitation and the graphic here that we've put together for that. That concludes my report.
Thank you, City Manager. We are moving on to proclamations. We've got three tonight, and our first proclamation, it's so, I can't wear three colors, so I'm wearing blue for the child abuse, but I have on my turquoise for the sexual assault, so I'm doing the best I can up here, I promise. So we are on item 7D, Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas Recognizing the Month of April as the National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And counsel, it's a fairly short proclamation. I'm going to read it quickly. Whereas every child is a precious and unique gift who deserves the security of a loving and nurturing home, and whereas every child deserves to grow up in a nurturing environment free from abuse, neglect, violence, or endangerment of any kind. Whereas children are vital to our community's future success, prosperity, quality of life, as well as being our most valuable assets. Child abuse and neglect cause serious harm to child development and have lifelong effects that endanger safety, hinder permanency in relationships, and reduce well-being, creating greater demands on society. And child abuse is considered to be one of the most serious public health problems, with scientific studies documenting the link between the abuse and neglect of children and a wide range of medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral disorders. Whereas child abuse and neglect are a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life in a community. Where communities that provide parents with social support, knowledge of parenting, child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and how to nurture their children will ensure that all children grow to their full potential. Whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now, therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. We have Megan with us from the Children's Advocacy Center, and Colin's going to take our picture. I'll put my mask on. And Megan, I want to give you an opportunity to go to the mic. You've got an event on Saturday that you might want to share with folks.
We do. Thank you, Mayor, council members. Yeah, we have an event this Saturday. It's Designer Purse Bingo. So it's a bingo event with designer purse prizes, and I think we've got some husbands that are going to attend as well, I assume, to increase their wives' chances. But it's an exciting event. It's going to be out at Sharaw's Garden, which is off of 1209, and starts at 2:00. We're actually sold out, which we're very excited to announce.
Excellent, and I know you still have some raffle tickets, so they don't even have to be present to win.
That's right.
So if somebody, we want to help you sell out all of that as well.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. We are, we're raffling off a really nice Louis Vuitton purse, so we've still got about 60 of those left, and you don't have to be present to win.
Okay, our next proclamation is from the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas Recognizing the Month of April as National Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And I have a proclamation for Pastor Jackson, as she is one of the people that works at the Family Crisis Center, but I think she has some words that she would like to share in lieu of y'all having to watch me read the proclamation. Pastor Jackson?
Pastor Jackson always has words. Thank you to the council for allowing us to do this. I just wanted to show you all this little replica tonight. During the month of April, the streamers will be in different businesses and other agencies around town to represent the one in five women, one in seven men that will experience sexual assault in their lifetimes. And so you will see these all over town, and there will be an exclamation, exclamation why, explanation why they are there. What we are continuing to ask the city, who has always been a good partner to us, is to help us get the awareness out there that we can support survivors, that we can lift them up and make people aware that sexual assault, sexual harassment is still very prevalent in our society. But the third component of that, the other piece of that, is we're asking you and the community to help us give a voice to people who have been affected by sexual harassment and sexual assault that are being silenced. If we create an environment where people don't have to hide it, are afraid to tell it, they will come forward and they'll be able to get help much sooner, and they can become, get on the road to surviving. So that's what we want to ask our community to do. That's what we want to help us do during the month of April, just to raise this awareness because the one in five women, one in seven men are going through very, very difficult times when they don't feel that they can come forward and share what is happening with him. I want to thank the council again because this year, I didn't even get a chance to call Ann. She called me, and she said, you're ready for the proclamation. And so I really, the agency really appreciates that. So you'll see these. We've got a couple of banners that we're going to be putting up. We might ask Mr. Hoffman if we can put one outside, leave it there for a week, and then move it around town, but we'll get with you guys to see if that's okay. But thank you for always partnering with us and the help that you all give us on these Awareness Month. I gave Lyle one of these because he has, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim. He has a purple shirt for October, but he didn't have a teal shirt for tonight, so I gave him. I have these. And yes, Councilman Jackson, wherever you are, you can see me and get it if you want to.
And Colin's going to take our picture and hold up your deal, and then we'll put it out on our social media, and we'll start doing awareness right now. Thank you, thank you very much.
If you want to, I'll let you do some more. Thank you.
Okay, and I can't say saving the best for last because then that insults the previous two, so we're just saying we're going to the third one, which is about National Library Week. And I am so happy that we have our recently promoted librarian, Bonnie Pearson, with us tonight, and she's got actually three, two of her board members and her board liaison. So Jennifer Leisure, Sally Kiner are also on the library board, and I am the library board liaison, so we get to spend quite a bit of time together. Would the three of you please stand up, and we'll give you a round of applause? Libraries are one of those things that through COVID, people did not realize how much they enjoyed their library. And even during the freeze, when the, if you don't have power, you can still read a book. And our library has stepped up in every way, everything from keeping books separated for the proper period of time and letting people have appointments to have computer access. It really fills a void that nothing else fills in the community. And one of the things that we go through, being the city of Bastrop and the county of Bastrop, is Judge Poppy and I get to answer questions for each other a lot, where I say, no, no, please stop yelling, you need to talk to Pa-Poppy. But the library is a city library, and we are happy to help as many people as we possibly can. But counsel, you are the ones that fund that library as a part of your budget every year, and we appreciate the hard, hard work that the staff does, and so, so thankful for the board. So I'm going to hit just a couple of highlights on this proclamation. Today's libraries are more about what they can do with and for their communities and not just about what they have on their shelves. Libraries have long served as trusted institutions, often the heart of their city, towns, schools, and academic campuses. Librarians thoughtfully develop collections and programs that are wide-ranging and explore the diversity of our changing society. America is celebrating National Library Week, including April 6th as National Library Workers' Day and the immeasurable contributions made by library workers. April 7th as National Bookmobile Day, showing library services are not limited to their physical location, and April 8th as Action for Libraries Day, encouraging community support for libraries. Now, therefore, I, Connie B. Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim April 4th through the 10th, National Library Week. Speaking of community support, the Friends of the Library has been a steadfast organization. Everybody always enjoys their plant sales. They do a lot of things for our library, and we are just so very thankful for the folks involved in the library. So if you guys will come forward, we'll get our picture taken. All right, we have no work sessions or briefings tonight, and we have a single staff report. We're on item 9A, received presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending February 28th. Ms. Waldron?
Good evening. I guess you have the clicker.
Uh-oh.
Okay, all right.
Who has the clicker?
I just have one slide, if you want to.
Okay.
All right. So my summary is pretty short and sweet.
So my summary is pretty short and sweet. It's the same story I've been telling the last four months at our financial report. Cemetery is below budget. I did check to see where our sales were on non-residents, because that's the fee that was increased substantially in October, and we're still sitting at one sale, so. But we have picked up on our residence side, so that gap is getting a little bit better. Park dedication fund interest is just not, not working for me this year.
It's not working for anyone right now, Ms. Waldron.
The Hunter's Crossing pit, you'll see that they're running a little behind forecast. We do have one property that has not completely paid their assessments, and the hot fund, it's actually 38% below forecast. I have a note here, and Mr. Hoffman talked about it earlier. We'll be bringing that back on April 13th. So if you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Ms. Waldron. Council, any questions for Ms. Waldron?
Expenses, everything's positive at this point.
Excellent. I would let the public know that the full report is up in the packet. There are some really great graphs and good information. I think, council, we've all been pleased with the, with the way, Ms. Waldron, that you've presented the information. It's very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, council, we're moving on to citizen comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments?
No, Mayor.
All right. We're moving on to the consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda. Does anybody want anything polled? Does anyone in the audience want a consent agenda item polled? Madam Secretary, if you'll please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 11A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the March 9th, 2021 regular meeting. Item 11B, consider action to approve resolution number R-2021-33 by the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, regarding the application of Centerpoint Energy Resources Corp., South Texas Division, to increase rates under the Gas Reliability Infrastructure Program, suspending the effective date of this rate application for 45 days, authorizing the city to continue to participate in a coalition of cities known as the Alliance of Centerpoint Municipalities, determining that the meeting at which the resolution was adopted complied with the Texas Open Meetings Act, making such other findings and provisions related to the, to the subject and declaring an effective date. Item 11C, consider action to approve resolution number R-2021-23 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a public improvement plan agreement with Ranch Road Development LLC for Pecan Park, Section 1B, as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. The consent agenda is approved. Council, we're going to be moving on to items for individual consideration, and I'm going to skip over 12A and 12B. It's going to be fairly fast, but we've got some folks in the audience, so I'm going to move on to them. I'm going to start with 12C. Sorry, Colin. Consider action to approve resolution number R-2021-27 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a contract with Archer Construction LLC to provide construction manager-at-risk services for, I think that is, for a not-to-seed amount of $378,000, as defined in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Mr. Joe.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I know you're familiar with this project, so I won't take too much of your time. But this is the pre-construction phase portion of the contract. So, and we have some folks here from Archer Western, Thor Benson, which is the project manager. Mark, I believe, if I get this wrong, Tepara is actually online, listening in.
Mr. Joe, I realize that the agenda and your statement so far, the public doesn't know we're talking about our water treatment plant.
So this is the, so this is the construction manager-at-risk contract that will manage the construction of our water treatment plant. And we also have here from Freezer Nichols, which are the engineer designing, Kirial's, Kendall King, and Charles Wolfe, and they'll answer any questions that I don't know. But the bottom line is this is the pre-construction phase, and what's going to happen here? And I've got a small slide, and for some reason, that's not all showing there, so my items are not in there. But essentially, in the pre-construction phase, we'll be looking for constructability. We'll also be looking for the value engineering early on before you get to that 60 and 90%. There'll be some drivers to this project, which is going to be the wells need to be drilled first, we want to make sure the wells are permitted as soon as possible, and really work on well field development to make sure that the project can move along, and it's simultaneously being done with the completion and design of the 60 and 90%. And it's not any better. So the point is, once that's done, we'll, we'll move forward and actually, oh, there we go. Looks like they're starting to come in. Maybe that's my fault for not clicking enough. So let me just, excuse me, and not blame that on Colin.
So again, we're here tonight, you can see that first star is to award the pre-construction
phase with Archer Western. Some of those project drivers focusing on the well, site access, the ground storage tank, those things really take a long time, so we wanted to focus on those first. Again, we're going to continue with the, with the 60 to 90%, and that's where the constructability and value engineering comes in. And then, at the same time, we'll be working on the well permitting with Freezer Nichols and the City of Bastrop. I'm already going to plan to speak in April. I've asked permission for the groundwater district to do that, so we can get them on board with where we're going. Then we'll complete the design, and that's when you'll see that guaranteed maximum price. And then we'll execute the contract. They'll hire their subs, and hopefully, we're on to new water supply by 2023. And with that, I'll take any questions.
I just don't like the "hopefully" part. We will be done in 2023.
At some point, yes. I want to give you a month just yet.
Councilmember Ennis.
Mr. Joe, I hate to sound like a broken record, but can you put slides like this in our packet?
Absolutely, absolutely. I can, and we will put this in the, in the Dropbox, if you like.
Be great.
This, this schedule will be updated once the contracts done, and Archer Western will go back and do some work. So we didn't want to have something that was too definite, but yes.
It'd be nice to have it in our packet, because sometimes these are real hard to read from a distance.
Absolutely. We can do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. Do you have any follow-up questions? That was it? Okay. Council, any questions? So this will be, this is the first time, to my knowledge, that the City of Bastrop's done a C-MAR contract.
To my knowledge as well.
Fortunately, we have a city manager who has done a C-MAR contract.
Correct.
So we are thankful for Mr. Hoffman's experience in this area, and also, you had a number of people that bid on this for the opportunity to do this.
There were several, yes. And that was in my staff report, and I'm happy to talk about it. We actually had seven different firms. Archer Western rose to the top pretty quickly with their experience, the scoring team, Mr. Hoffman, myself, city engineer, Curtis Hancock. Really early on, we realized that our scores were, were leaning towards Archer Western. We contacted them, and we started negotiating right away, so that we can keep moving.
Councilmember Ennis.
I would like to say, remind council, and as if we need to remind him, but for the folks at home, we've spent several council meetings discussing the C-MAR process and determining that it was the best way for us to go. And so this is kind of a culmination of all of those meetings.
This is a great way to take the expertise from the contractor and absolutely integrate that into design early on, so that we don't end up doing that later.
Excellent. Well, welcome to the team. We're glad to have you. I'm assuming the vote's going to go your way. I'm happy to take a motion. I move to approve. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers, and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Officially, welcome to the team. We're glad to be working with you guys and look forward to, good, good work from you. Council, we're moving on to Item 12D. Consider action to approve resolution number R-2021-32 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, to award an engineering service contract to TRC Engineering, Inc., to provide services for the city's 2021-2022 Texas Community Development Block Grant Application and Project Related Engineering Services if funded, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Hi, Fabiola.
Hey. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. I have in front of you tonight, for your consideration and approval, a professional services contract for the Farm Street Reconstruction Blue Project. First, I would like to start by giving you guys a little bit of background. So on February 9th, City Council approved, Grant Works would be the grant administrator on this project. This would be a grant through a Texas Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $350,000. And if approved, the city would have to come, come up with a portion in the amount of $52,500, which would bring the total project funding amount in $402,500. So we've done the engineer selection process following the state procurement laws and requirements as defined in the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Texas CDBG. We published a request for qualification on March 9th of this year. We received three qualifications, and we formed a committee where we ranked all the three qualifications we received, and we selected TRC Engineers Incorporated for this project. And we have two representatives with us here tonight from TRC, Sean Cook and Craig Bell. So if approved, the next steps would be to execute a professional services contract with TRC Engineers, develop a project scope, and in April of 13, we'll come back to you to authorize the, moving forward with the application, with Texas CDBG application. If not approved, there's no cost to the city. So this is proposed project limits for this project on Farm Street, from Main Street through Pecan Street.
Pecan.
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 With that, the, the engineering department recommends, City Council, to authorize the approval resolution number R-2021-32 to award an engineering services contract with TRC Engineers for the city's 2021-2022 Texas Community Development Block Grant Application and Project Related Professional Services funded. So I'll take any questions you might have at this time.
Council, any questions for Fabiola? One of...
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jackson.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Rogers. Council, I will let you know that when, looking at the applications that we got, TRC does a lot of work for Elgin, for our neighbor in, in the Elgin area, and they are very well-respected, and Elgin had many nice things to say about you. So it's nice that they've got area experience, and we're, we're lucky to have another good professional firm to work with. Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Fabiola. All right, council, we're moving on to Item 12E. Consider action to approve resolution number R-2021-30 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a contract for the City of Bastrop Streets, Pavement, and Preventive Maintenance Project to FN Plo Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $408,684.45, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Mr. Hancock.
Mayor, council, tonight, we're bringing back to y'all year three of the street maintenance program. We also have Alan Longo here with Walker Partners, in case you have any questions for him as well. This is just an aerial map of the areas where we're working on. On February 23rd, we opened six bids, and ranging from $408,684.45 to $754,301. It was a pretty wide-range spread across there this year, and it was well below what we estimated for this project. By looking back at last year, it was the rock. It was coming in $2, $2 cheaper, and that's the big difference between this year and last year. I did provide y'all with the list of streets. I don't know if y'all seen that. And I'll take any questions y'all have on this.
Council, any questions for Mr. Hancock?
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Just a quick question. Well, all the times we get asked by citizens, when is their street going to be worked on? Will this information be altered to what street or schedule for this third year of maintenance? Will it be available on the city website?
You bet it will. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Perfect. Council, any other questions? Councilmember Ennis.
I'd like to compliment you on, on your presentation. The, the update that you provided for us and all the graphics was very explanatory and very easy to, to decipher and assimilate.
A little easier than me speaking to you, huh?
We got to think of other reasons for you to come back, Mr. Hancock. We'd always like seeing you. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, yay. We're going to get the third year, year three taken care of. Council, we've got two items to go back to. We're going back to Item 12A. Consider and adopt on the first and final reading ordinance number 2021-04 of an emergency measure ratifying temporary emergency orders enacted by the mayor in her capacity as the emergency management director in regards to the current local state of disaster for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety. Council, I'll tell you that there is no, there's nothing to vote on tonight. We did take the vote last time with our measures. Things seem to be going quite well, so we have no plans to change anything at this time. I have been giving you the update, I have a quick update on the number of cases and the vaccine. From a case standpoint, what we remain the most interested in is the status of trauma service area zero. You'll recall that when we got up over 15%, there were problems. We are now down to 4.66%. Out of 11 counties, there are 203 people in all of the 11 counties that are in the hospital with COVID. So people being careful, getting the vaccines, and taking precautions, we're, we're seeing the, certainly the cases that require hospitalization go down considerably. For the vaccine, in the state of Texas, there are 14.2 million doses that have been allocated, and 9.4 million doses have been given as of 4:00 today. And I will let you know that in Bastrop County, 15,312 people have received one dose, and 5,494 people have received both doses. And if you add those two numbers together, that's 20,806 people, and that is 30% of the population that's over the 16%. That has doubled in a two-week period. So certainly, doses are available, and folks are being able to take advantage of clinics. Speaking of clinics, of the hub clinics that Bastrop County has been sponsoring and taking care of, as of March 12th, they had administered 17,708 doses. They are making plans to have a 5,000-dose day. They're hoping that that's going to be within the next couple of weeks. Of course, that's contingent on getting the allocation of the vaccine to be able to do that. One thing I did want to make you aware of is that Bastrop County was chosen to pilot a new state system that will take over the call center for folks that have questions about the vaccine, and it will also, they will answer the call center, they will be scheduling the appointments, and a part of that process, you will tell them how far you're willing to drive, and they will schedule you based on availability and, and where you're willing to drive. So they're kind of taking it up a notch. And that system also automatically updates things to MTRAC, which is the immunization tracking. It's a good thing. So they're continuing to make progress and encourage folks, if you go to covac.info, it will help put you automatically to that new system. They're, they're trying to make that as seamless as they can. So I don't have anything for you to vote on, so unless you have any questions for me, that covers Item 12A. Moving on to Item 12B. Moving on to item 12B, consider action to approve resolution number R-2021-20 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a professional services agreement between the City of Bastrop and ASAS LLC for professional services related to ASA, do they go by SAS or ASAS? I don't know. Project development agreement negotiations as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. What you have here before you tonight is just a professional services agreement, as just in the title here. Basically, there's a 552-acre tract that's interested in entering into a development agreement with us, and this allows us to recoup our fees, not putting a burden on the current taxpayer. So it's pretty short and sweet. We just, they've agreed to pay all those fees, so.
So, Mr. Jobe, this is the second professional services agreement that we've entered into in the last two or three months, correct?
That's absolutely correct.
So it's, the first one was over 400 acres. This one is over 500 acres.
That's correct.
And it's nice, to your point, and I really appreciate you pointing out for the public that this is the way that that new development is paying its own way and not a burden to our current taxpayers.
That's correct. This is actually a requirement of our ordinance, and the fee schedule is, once they pay the initial fee, they come back and do a development agreement to make sure that the professional services are covered as well.
Excellent. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Jobe? Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
So, so it's a clean process to ensure that the development continues in a positive manner in and around the city of Bastrop.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
It's outstanding. Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further questions or comments?
I have a question.
Councilmember Ennis?
The graphic with the light blue line on it, that's, that's the parameters of this development.
Yes, sir. That's the 552 acres.
Okay. Great. I couldn't make anything out on the, on the black and white graphics, so I was hoping that's it. Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are on item 13. It is 7:21.
If you don't mind, I'd like to say something before he gets his wonderful motion.
Absolutely.
I wanted to say thank you for you taking care of all of the COVID stuff for all this time, keeping track of how many shots are going where, I don't know how many phone calls. I don't even want to think about it. So I just want you to know that you're always on top of it. I always, if I have a question, you know more information than I even need to want. But I wanted to say thank you because I know how much work that has been for the last year.
Thank you.
And I'm so much happier to you, not me.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Councilmember Rogers. Now, item 13, Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.